It is six thirty-one. I call the June seventeenth Planning Board meeting to order. First on the agenda is the minutes. Oh, Paul's not here, of course. I'm looking at you, not you yet to the change. Okay, so that will be postponed until the following week. Approval not required plans, we have none. So we go on to discussion. Applicant Nathan S. Ellis Highway LLC Special Permit Modification to update the equipment list, expand hours of operation, and allow outside parking of vehicles accessible to the primary use, excuse me, of the contractor's yard located at two-ten Nathan S. Ellis Highway East Belmont. And as you know, the hearing is closed. We however do have a request in here from the applicant's attorney, Jeff Oppenheim, to reopen the hearing. And I would like each one of you, well, you can read it, but I think I need to read it for the television audience, too. It says, "Please accept this letter as a request to reopen the public hearing on the above matter. This request is made so that the petitioner can add important information to the record. In addition, after the hearing was closed on June third, 2014, Town Council Frank Duffy on June fifth, 2014 rendered the attached opinion," excuse me, which I learned of on June thirteenth, 2014. "The petition modified its application to amend the special permit after it was filed when the petitioner was informed that the portion of the application relative to the parking of wheeled vehicles with a weight of over thirteen thousand pounds owned by Cavosa Disposal, Inc. should be presented to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. Town council's opinion is that it should be heard by the planning board. Should the planning board agree to reopen the public hearing, the petitioner consents to a thirty-day extension to the deadline for a decision by the planning board until October third, 2014." Now, you should know that this requires just a simple majority to reopen the hearing. So I'd like to hear discussion and your thoughts on the request.
If there's new information that we haven't heard, then I think it's advisable to consider reopening.
Okay. Ken?
I would say the same. I'm not really sure.
Jim?
What was the weight limitation before? This is a new issue to me.
That's a new issue to me, too.
I know, but what do we, what's the difference?
Brian? In regard to that thirteen thousand pounds?
There's a section of the bylaw that allows the Board of Appeals to issue a special permit for accessory use of this parking of wheeled vehicles over thirteen thousand gross pounds gross vehicle weight. The only impression that the Board of Appeals had jurisdiction, council's written an opinion that this board would have jurisdiction regardless of people.
Okay. Bob, your opinion?
Mine is, I'm of the same mind as everybody else. If there's new information that we should hear, I'm all for allowing that to be here.
And Ralph, your opinion, please?
I'm in agreement with the rest of the board.
As am I. So what I would need, then, is a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this letter and reopen the public hearing.
We reopen the public hearing. Okay. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Okay. And I would assume there's no further discussion since you're here.
Well, I have a question.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Does this bring up notice and the opportunity for public to come back and keep the whole thing going?
It reopens it.
And my only question is, is it necessary? That's why I asked my first question. What's the differential of pounds we're keeping this going for months for?
It's necessary to reopen it if they are allowed to present new information. And the board has indicated that, since they indicated that they have new information to present that wasn't available at that time, that they're in favor of reopening it to hear the new information from the petitioner. That doesn't mean that they can't change their opinion now, but...
Well, I'm not against it. I just, I still don't understand the difference in weight that we're having this, keeping this open for another couple of months. It doesn't matter.
No, it's not just the difference in weight. It's the fact that there is new information.
From the applicant.
From the applicant.
Okay.
First paragraph, and then there's the second paragraph. There's new information that Mr. Cavosa would like to play, present in front of the board. In addition, there are some vehicles that were taken off the list because of the gross vehicle weight in their application based on an opinion that has been reversed, so they're going to reamend their application if you send it back.
That's what he wants. It's fine with me. I was just trying to speed this along.
No, we can't.
As long as it's the applicant that's not creating the...
Yeah, no argument. I'm done.
Okay. So at this point, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're probably looking at around July twenty-seventh. Okay. And we move on now. Man, I might beat all speed brakes tonight.
We might get in, we might get out before their usual time to get in.
Yeah.
We move on to the local comprehensive plan elements. And you will see both the original with the changes that when we got together as our smaller committee, we discussed it. Your changes that you indicated you'd like to see, plus some others that we will generally put in, you know, based upon your comments, plus we looked at it again as to whether certain other items could be consolidated or not, certain of the priorities. Do you have further comments on this?
I do not. I reviewed this and agree with what was sent in, with the changes.
You like the changes, then?
Yes, yes.
Okay. How about anybody else?
I'm satisfied with the changes.
Okay. Obviously, the three of us are.
As you're doing. It's up to you, Doug.
I'm just taking a little quick look here to see if there's anything I don't like.
As you should. I want to mention one thing. We did say, we were really doing this to encourage you guys to speak up in our meeting when we talked about this.
Yeah, as you...
We're not trying to push this through.
No.
This is here tonight to, for you to take it down.
As you'll remember, we had the verbiage that goes with it for the coastal resilience, and we thought that kind of truncated discussion that might occur because you had focused on that rather than the goal and the policies was a little different from what we normally do. So we'll get a little bit more going on this, and then at some point, we will vote it for town meeting. Because as you know, they have to vote it. It's not just us. Okay?
I just wanted to address one thing that Doug brought up last time about mentioning of historic. And when we went back and we were looking at this, we realized that we do have an element for the historic character of the town.
Yeah, and that's where it's covered.
And that's where it's covered, so...
And there was also a question there, what high-quality durable built environment meant. And I really, I thought I knew, but I couldn't say it well. But what we are looking at is the old buildings in this town, some of which go back two-hundred, three-hundred years. And we're looking at the longevity of the buildings in Europe, and that's the kind of thing. We're not looking at something that lasts ten or twenty years and then has to come down because it's rotted or whatever. We're looking at a quality environment that has a good chance of becoming new history.
How can we, how can we do that in our position on the planning board?
We can't.
Right.
None of these are enforceable, as you know. The comprehensive plan just gives guidelines for anybody who's responsible for the town. And we don't have, at this current time, we don't have any authority over what kinds of buildings are built. We can do it by suasion, if you will, and that has worked to some extent. You weren't on the board when Bob Murray's development was done down the street, but it was just this blank face, had no character to it. We didn't like it at all, so we asked if they could redesign it so it had some step backs and some character to it. And he very kindly did that, and I think we've got a building that is a lot better than as it was originally presented to us. And that's the kind of thing we can do with this.
Okay. And also, too, when you look at the quality of buildings, we're looking at reusing some of the school buildings possibly, the administration building or one of the elementary schools. And they were built many years ago.
It's a blast.
And you look at something like the senior center, which has just about fallen in on itself.
It did once. They had to rebuild it.
Right. So that really wasn't built for the long...
It was, okay. You know the rock that was there then. So that's the...
That's what we're trying to promote.
That is a wonderful comparison, Bob.
Right. It would be nice if we could ask that they consider, you know, brickface and slate roofs or something like that. But we, I guess we really can't at this point until things...
We can ask. We cannot force them to comply. Ken?
One of the things when we worked on the local comprehensive plan before, too, was said was, by giving guidelines like this, when people review this, they look at it and go, hey, this might be a more appealable project to any board if we put some of these in it. And that's kind of what this was a combination.
You're right.
Yeah.
And we've already seen some of this coming before us just lately with the business redevelopment, zoning, and things like that. I think people have taken notice of what we've, what they've seen, what they've witnessed here. And I think it's for the better.
So let's hope.
Yeah, Pat. Also, the local, I mean, the Community Preservation Committee in our plan references the local comprehensive plan. So people who come to the Community Preservation Committee with a proposal are directed to go to the local comprehensive plan and try to incorporate what it says into their proposal.
And maybe we can't do some of the things that we have written here now, but fifty years from now might be a common thing.
Yeah, could give guidance for fifty years from now.
Yeah.
So...
So we'll probably see this at our July meeting with the board.
Great. So they can give their input on it, too. Because as you know, they have to recommend it to town meeting. Okay. Sunrise Estates, status of the work/warfare tier bond.
With work going on, Chairman Swire just asked the board to move along and table this item, and hopefully I'll get a final inspection report for your next meeting back from engineering is my goal.
Very good. Now we have committee reports. Anybody wish to give? Yes, I knew you did.
Well, yeah, I wanted to say, there's a lot of things moving along with the EDIC. Can't really talk about the lease negotiations or anything, but we're working really hard with the state to develop a lease for a hundred years for the train, for the depot. And our biggest challenges are, I don't think these are lease negotiations, so I'm pretty sure I can talk about it, is the finding ways to get income from such a teeny site. And we're talking about all kinds of things, and some of them are bringing in train cars. The, we, what we were, we have, we have land there that we can use for other, other things. And that's, we're trying to find ways to generate income enough, not to make money, but just to support the building. If we're, if the town is going to become responsible for this building for the next hundred years, we want to do a better job than letting it run into the ground the way the state did. We want to have, you know, things in place that can keep the income going. So it's, it's our major focus. Then the other really big thing is the reuse of the landfill. And we've studied all kinds of opportunities, and everything's been looked at, every, anything anyone brought up, the strongest so far, we haven't made the final decision, but by far, the solar arrays are looking to be the only one that actually brings income in. All the rest cost money. So we have totally finished the analysis, but that's pretty straightforward to understand that. And I've gone down and visited, well, there's been an eighty megawatt, we're proposing a five megawatt, just for scale, I'm going to talk about some numbers. We're proposing a five-and-a-half megawatt plant here, and there's been a combined eighty megawatt, like seven towns, seven or eight towns further down Cape that's coming online now. And I've gone down and visited some of these places, walked around the Brewster Dump and seen where they have their landfill operations and their, their, you know, their mulch thing and everything. And right next to them, they lay out their solar arrays right on top of their membrane, run cables through them, bring them to inverters, and are generating power. It really is pretty simple. The technologies come along, it's not like super high-tech anymore. It, I mean, these things go on rooftops, they go everywhere, and they're being put all over the state and all over the country. And it looks to me, we're asking, our next meeting is for our engineers to bring back some cash flow statements that actually show what the revenue is. And that's, then we'll, then we'll have some really hard numbers. But that's going to be a really big deal, I think, for the EDIC anyways, and hopefully the town, it's not going to make, you know, millions of dollars, it's going to bring the town good, good cheap energy, and it'll bring some, a small amount of revenue to a piece of land that's doing nothing, but it's looking pretty attractive. So hopefully in the next six months or a year, there'll be some really good information coming on. And those are the two things we've been focusing on, on the EDIC.
I'd recommend the EDIC, take a look at Amesbury's train station, what they've done with that, because they had a similar situation, and it's become pretty economically viable with what they've done with Amesbury Mass.
Any one or two components that are red hot that I could bring back? Like what, for instance?
Off the top of my head, I can't think of everything that they did, but they, they run different businesses out of it and things like that, so...
Our biggest problem is now we have like a thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And most of it's bathrooms and...
But you mentioned bringing in railcars or something like that.
Right, we're trying to figure out, we're...
I mean, I think that would be great.
We're trying to figure out, I got some feedback from Tom Caher today and other people. The railcars are pretty expensive, but we might be able to do them there. It could be a hundred thousand dollars for each car, between the cost of the rough car, bringing it here, and renovating it, bring up the code, so, and then figure out the rent you're going to get for being out there. But we've talked with other businesses in town. We're working on it. We encourage other people, if any ideas, to bring them forward at this time, come to our meetings, and let's hear more.
Yeah, I have a question, Jim. There is an organization in town about clean energy. And I don't remember exactly who it is or what it is. I was just wondering if you've been working with them at all? Is that a town entity?
The Energy Committee?
Yeah.
What is it called? The Energy Committee?
It's an energy committee, yeah. I just wondered, are you, is the EDIC coordinating with them at all?
Not yet. All we're right, doing right now is evaluating, our first job was, we had like twenty different committees, and I had twenty different ideas they wanted to do. And so we're sorting through, and we've had Weston and Sampson doing the analysis and bringing the reports forward. And it looks like the report's going to be, the record, the final recommendation would be for solar arrays. And at that time, that's when we would reach out for other, other groups if they've been working on it. But right now, I mean, we're just, we don't even have the, we don't have the money yet. The revenue hasn't been projected yet, but we're getting close. They have been to one of our meetings to answer your questions specifically, yes. About six months ago, we had a meeting in every group in town that wanted to come and put the roar in the water and pitch their thing, had a chance to do it. And we made sure that our consultants were there to listen to all those points and evaluated all of them, and they'll all be included in the final report. But as far as real detail goes, no.
Any other questions? Yes, Doug?
Oh, it's not a question. I was going to just...
You've got a committee report.
Yeah, not a very big one, but...
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Go ahead, Doug.
Just the coastal ponds management committee is still working on bringing forth a management plan for Green Pond, and now they're working on West Falmouth Harbor also. And currently, we're having a little trouble getting a quorum because of some people travel for work and some health issues and stuff. So we're considering reducing the size of the committee from nine to seven. So that's only the, the big news right now, there's no voting last time because of the quorum issue, so that's what's happening with them.
I don't know if people have heard, but the, there was some huge grants just awarded to some Cape and Vineyard towns for restoration, coastal pond restoration, and wetlands restoration. So is that something that your committee delves into?
Well, you know, I'm fairly new on there. I haven't heard anything about grant research yet. And right now, it's more pond management.
Yeah.
Management plan for these pilot projects for West Falmouth and Green Pond. And if those play out, what, their primary focus is trying to implement measures that, like the helical piers for the moorings...
Yeah.
Rather than the chain that moves around and wipes out.
Yeah.
You know, it scours an area. So they want to get that plan in place before, you know, we spend a lot of time and effort restoring the bays because it's part of the, part of the problem.
And essentially, you've had our group report with this, discussion. Ralph, do you have any comments?
Yeah, the Community Preservation Committee is currently soliciting applications for projects for fall town meeting. And the deadline is later this month. I'm not going to quote a date because I can't remember.
I think it's the twenty-sixth.
Towards the end of the month.
Twenty-sixth, I believe.
Twenty-sixth?
I think so.
Okay. And we, I think we, we've had interest from, I believe, like fifteen different organizations that are inquiring about applying, and we expect probably that, that number to have to go through and evaluate and present to town meeting in the fall. We did get additional money this year from the state. The state last year voted to give twenty-five million dollars of state revenue surplus to the Community Preservation Fund. This year, they voted ten million. There is a coalition of community preservation committees and towns that have adopted the CPA. And that organization, that coalition is based in Boston, and they lobby for positive changes in the law and also for money such as the surplus that was, was granted, granted to us last year, the twenty-five million. And now this year's budget is, has been reduced to ten million, but still, it's in excess of what we had anticipated. So we're looking forward to having ample funds to recommend a lot, and I'm not sure how many, but a lot of the applications to town meeting in the fall.
Question. That ten million you're talking about is spread over how many different cities and towns?
Well, all of the towns that have adopted it, and I'm trying to remember how many that is. More and more towns adopt the, the act every year, but I think, I think the number of towns in, in Massachusetts that have adopted it is about like two-thirds of the towns. That's, that's a guess right now. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have, I do have that information, but I don't have it with me. So what, your question is, the more towns that adopt the act, the more pieces the pie is cut into.
I was trying to provide the ten million by what?
Yeah, but, but there's also...
Probably by about two-hundred.
That's what I was thinking. Is it two-hundred?
There's also another factor, and that is the towns, when they adopt the Community Preservation Act, have a choice of taxing themselves one percent, two percent, or three percent. So if a town only taxes themselves one percent, then they're going to get a smaller piece.
Okay.
The town of Falmouth adopted the land bank bill years ago, and that was a three percent surcharge that we placed upon ourselves, and that is still in place for Falmouth. We get the maximum number of dollars from the Community Preservation Act fund every year that we could possibly get. And we, I believe Barnstable is the only town that gets any more than we do on the, on Cape Cod and the islands. So we get a large amount of money. I think over the last, since we adopted the act nine years ago, I think we've, we've handed, we've recommended and received, we've received and recommended, I think, like twelve million dollars or something for projects in the town. I don't have that figure in front of me again, but it's a lot of money that has gone, and, and some has, is going to be used for the renovation of Oddfellas Hall, right across the street.
Any other questions?
Is that still going to be four apartments?
There's going to be four one-bedroom apartments in that building, yeah. And the selectman approved it, I don't know, two weeks ago, I think, or something like that, about... There might be one other thing I could mention. In the past, affordable housing projects had to come to the CPC and then be voted at town meeting. But the CPC requested special legislation through the, through town meeting to go to the, to the state, and it formed, it formed a trust fund of money, which the CPC funded. So instead of having to wait for town meeting to get money from this trust fund, there's an expedited procedure that can be used, and it goes from the Community Preservation Committee directly to the selectman, and the selectman can agree to spend, allocate money for projects, which is, is the case in Oddfellas Hall. So that's why you wouldn't see it on, on the, on the town meeting warrant. Some, some projects, a good portion of the projects probably will be funded that way. There is currently more than a million dollars in that fund for affordable housing. And the reason we did that was because when, as those of you who are involved in real estate and familiar with real estate, real estate... who are involved in real estate and familiar with real estate, real estate deals come all year long. And if you had to wait for a town meeting to make a real estate, a, an opportune real estate deal, you might lose it. So this way, the process is expedited and the town can take advantage of real estate opportunities that it normally wouldn't, couldn't.
Any other questions, Ralph? Okay. So we're moving on to general correspondence. And guess what? There is an. And so items for future agendas. Anybody have anything they want to bring up?
Yeah, Brian, is, is, where are we on the additional position that's going to be added to the planning board? I'm sorry, to the planning office?
Still to review personnel and the town manager. Ralph, I hope to have some information for you perhaps at your next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any discussion on this?
This, I asked Brian because I didn't know what it was. And this is the review of our bylaws. It's the report.
Oh.
So it's our homework.
Okay.
So for a future agenda item, I'd like plenty more members to look through that. It's 54 pages long. I'd like to be able to schedule that for sometime in July between Duffy and Aladio and Reed myself to review and then bring to you and to the Board of Appeals. And I'd be able to bring an article to the town meeting in November, so warranty or causes in September. So a future agenda item for a late July meeting, hopefully to view the review of this document. The first 30 or so pages are punctuation and syntax, but it can be extremely important. And then the last 17 pages or so are more substantive changes. I'd like to focus on the, the commas and the, you know, the verbiage first, clean that up. And it takes more time, I think, to get into the 17 pages of substance. We might hire another attorney or firm to help us and you sort through that. And I'd get to some of the basic stuff for that at town meetings. We're probably looking at July 22 to go over.
Are you thinking about having a joint meeting with the planning board and the CBA to go over that together or no?
If it's necessary. I think we could probably come to some fairly common agreement on some of the things there. But I think perhaps on substance, it might be a good idea.
That's why I'm questioning.
But, yeah, but I think for the upcoming town meeting, probably not. But I'd do for the April town meeting when we bring in something of sub, real substance, that would be a good idea.
Okay.
So stand by for that.
Okay. And.
I was just going to say, I was real pleased to read the Davis Strait study. And I really liked what they had to say in that.
We'll briefly discuss that at the selectman's meeting on the 23rd, which is going to be Monday, together with this complete streets study that will be undertaken for the entire 18,000 year means. But very brief.
Yeah, Brian will be doing the presentation of that. And of course, we have the senior center on that agenda as well.
Right. That'll be a 6 o'clock start on Monday. So you can get a little extra time to.
Be an hour and a half long.
For an hour and a half.
6 o'clock.
Yeah, so make note of that.
Under, just on the Davis Straits thing, some of the people, Mike in particular on the EDIC, asked why we started, you know, just on David Straits and why didn't we include East Main Street in the vision with the Cape Cod Commission looking at that?
Okay, the answer, I think, and Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the Cape Cod Commission is building on what they have already done.
Right.
What was requested. And we can only cut off just certain chunks at a time. So it's going to have to be done in a, not exactly a piecemeal, but a chunk manner, I guess.
Remember, East Main Street went, was this.
Well, I, I know. There just seems to be a lot happening in East Main Street now.
Over a decade ago and the zoning was put in place when we did our vision. So East Main Street is actually done. We're building off.
I agree. I was relaying a question.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I want to make the.
But you know, it's going to have to meld in a way. So. Did it go all the way down to Scranton? I'm drawing a blank on that because, okay, because this is going to start from Scranton.
King, King Street to Scranton. This started Scranton to the, do you think it might?
Yeah. Somehow I had in my brain it had only had gone down to.
But it's, at some point, we got to kind of blend it all together.
It's component parts. Or we didn't want East Main Street to be a replica of Main, of Main Street between Post Office Street.
I can't.
So each segment actually is somewhat distinct. But this made the most sense because it is under, it was something the planning board looked at in 1997, that triangle, Davis Straits, Spring Bar, Road, and Mr. Court. So here we are some years later, still trying to put a vision plan together with regards to that area, which is pretty much now really, really ripe for a redevelopment scheme, given the age of the buildings, some of the uses that are there. So that's why we decided to move forward with that one first.
Anything else? And I need a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second at all. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.